It it don't matter.
So this is gonna end up on the cutting room floor.
This is, this is, I may just tape over this.
Alright, alright.
I just wanna see how the sound comes through, make sure it's gonna be loud enough when I, when I actually play something there.
So Frankie, you gotta say something now.
Like what?
How many record, how many records do you have?
You talk about your thirty three thirty.
Hundred and thirty, thir- uh thirty three.
Hundred and thirty three.
So that'd make two hundred and sixty if you get both sides of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, someone were kinda wavy, you said they.
Yeah, they kinda wave up and down.
Like, like.
Then we got over fifty, uh eight tracks. Or ten or fifteen, uh, uh tapes, we call them.
Eight track tapes?
Cassette.
Cassette, yeah.
Cassette, and then I got, uh, one CD. No, I got more than that, I got over four CDs. And I had a little problem.
You got stock in WD forty, right?
Yeah. Yeah, and that's a wonderful thing. WD forty, that's good for a lot of things. Remington, my.
What it aches and pains and all.
Whatever, whatever else, yeah.
Yeah.
They, they claim they got somebody who's strong with that now, like Nutbusters and all that stuff.
Oh.
Yeah.
You don't use that though.
No.
Yeah, you gotta stick with the brand WD forty.
They say I'm a male of Johnston Town, uh. And I think where Johnston Town come in here, had up here is. It, it was a big family of the Johnsons, you know? And eight of us. Four boys and four girls and they had to nerd on down to three of us. Two boys and one girl, so. I don't know, I've been, I've been here for seventy four years, all my life and. I've seen a lot of, lot of things going around here. But, uh.
What was your mom and dad's name?
Uh, my, my dad's name was Harvey P. Johnson, Harvey Perkins, I'll say. And my mama's name was Ali Lee Johnson, she was a prophet. So that's kinda. We had went all around here with hi- his, uh, brothers and sisters and. Her brothers and sisters, Uncle Smith, my uncle used to live in a little house over here, Liz is at. He, he stayed with mama all the time. So I don't know, I, I ain't much on talking or nothing like this.
What you been doing all your life? Hammering nails?
Yeah, hammering nails.
Nelly cocks?
Nelly cocks, yep. Yeah, the old saying about the nelly cocks, uh, you know, when you hit the nail, it's supposed to hit the nail and you miss it and you hit the wood. And you put a kinda bruise of wood, we used to call that a nelly cock. I don't know where the nelly cock come from, but that's what they call it.
Probably, okay, and it hit you, uh, final tip.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Hit the wrong nail.
Few chosen words.
Yeah, hit the wrong nail, yeah.
Well, you got, and you've had all kinds of nicknames too.
Yeah, got.
Wh- wh- what did, uh, your brother, uh, Arthur used to?
Arthur used to call me Moesby.
Moesby.
Hey, Moesby.
And, and other?
And he used to call me, li- when I was a little guy, they, they used to call me Little Hoosie.
Well, I hadn't heard that one.
And, and then, then Miller, he gave me a name of, of Woody.
Well, that was DJ Barnett did that.
Yeah, DJ Barnett.
You called in the radio station one time and, and they announced it, oh, Woody Johnson just called in from Johnston, I said, oh, that, that one's gotta stick.
Oh, no. And we have a lot of, lot of meetings around here, uh, uh, get over here sometime with the string, measure the water and the well and. Different things we do around here. And, uh, kinda, kinda keep things rolling around here a little bit.
Well, let's see, and, uh, to live in Johnston Town, you gotta have at least three licensed vehicles, right?
Y- yeah, that, that's right, yeah, you gotta have at least three licensed vehicles.
That's one of the rules about living around here.
Yeah, to keep up with, with the Hardaway, uh, the, the man, the bank owner.
Yeah, I'm the one starting the devil.
Yeah, you need a bank.
That's right.
Yes, sir.
Still got seven.
Still got seven.
Vehicle.
Licensed vehicles right now?
Run two.
But.
Why drive where I want, run two antique.
But since it's, uh. Last, last couple of weeks here, this, uh, new, new, uh, uh, new blue come out.
The airplane, huh?
Yeah, that man, that thing will fly, but, but that color blue is pretty, man.
You can only assume we're talking about the two thousand and four commemorative edition Chevy Corvette.
That's right, yes, sir.
Completely covered up in the Vice Mayor's garage right now, right?
Yeah, that's right. Yes, sir.
Now Frankie was, Frankie was the first one to get a ride.
Frankie, what did you think about that car when you first saw it?
Well, when I first walked out the door, I was, he was sitting in the car and he didn't get hurt and he motioned for me to come on our time, I. I was thinking that, I was thinking it was the other car, the Sunbird, but then I said, well, no, he's the right color. And he said, get in here, then I realized one of them, yeah. And we went up the road and I couldn't get away from the seat, and I propped back against the seat. And till he had to slow up around the curb. And then he got William and he had a little bit more space to fly, you know, without, and that.
Oh, that's, that's the latest, the latest edition.
But, but I told him to hold it, hold it. Cause it was flying, I'll tell you.
Like that time we went down to, uh, Willie Melton Bottom, three of us and Monk.
Yeah.
With the swivel.
With, with, with the, uh, the Toro Doom buggy.
Yeah, that twisted.
Yeah, that was something else. Remember when we did the water down there?
Yeah.
Who fell in the water?
Huh?
Who fell in the water, somebody did.
Somebody fell in the water?
Somebody, I think when Gene Miller fell in the water, didn't he?
It was, that was funny. I told William I was gonna, I was gonna dive in the water and down and down, down in, in the creek down there, where the Anderson Creek. I told William I was gonna do it, but I was gonna make it look like it was an accident. So I'm walking up there and I, all of a sudden just nosedive right into the water and Monk and, Monk and Frankie thought, oh, man, he's something wrong, he's in the water, you know?
Yeah, I videoed it morning.
Yeah, yeah, that was good.
Yeah, we'll go through by that creek where we went in the water.
Why is that?
Wide note, got deep too.
Oh, the creek.
Oh, did it? I've been down there.
From all that rain and all that, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, then he got hung up over in the woods, he got a piece of log and couldn't get up. We had to.
Well, that was over by your.
By the cemetery.
By your granddaddy's cemetery, uh, burial place, yeah.
We thought the thing would go anywhere, but it got tangled up in the log.
Yeah, it got, it got hung up. Yeah, we've got, yeah, we got two golf carts around here, Frankie hasn't got his yet, he's working.
That's right, he'll go get one.
He's gonna get one. See, he gets where he can't walk real well, then have to get one.
I'm gonna use my thing on it again.
Oh.
Well, the thing of a Volkswagen.
The VW thing, yeah. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wish Monk was here today.
He's taking some tests for his back, uh, chest problem.
Oh, he is?
I remember talking about how his back had been bothering him that night we were all here.
We do like eating around here, don't we?
Where's, where's, where do you go to eat around here?
We, we go to William's house.
Well, we, we, we had, we had a feed here at Miller's here.
Was we, from Monday?
Sunday, Sunday.
Sunday, yeah.
Sunday after.
Mashed potatoes and gravy and turkey.
Yeah, turkey, great day.
That got turkey Nathan gave me, Nathan and Bonnie gave me for Christmas.
Eddie.
He sent some turkey home with me and I just finished eating it yesterday.
And what, what about that gravy, what'd you say about the gravy?
Well, it, it always have given me the indigestion so I let the dogs have a feed.
Yeah, indigestion dogs.
They went down, all that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Wi- William's a good one for making salt herring, tell them how you do that, William.
Well, I. I, I, I just like to, I like any kind of fish, really. But the herons, they, they the best kind. Salt them down good and add the salt, brine them up and then fry them out. Real good and crispy and just put them in your mouth, just eat the whole thing, the bones and all. That's the good part. And, and I saw it on television yesterday, said that's where the flavors at is in the bones.
Is that right?
There he goes with that yesterday again.
Yesterday.
Yeah. Yes, titty, get that titty in there somehow. No, William, you're like, yes, titty. I know how that aggro.
They, they, they make fun of how I talk, see? I don't, I don't care.
There, there's a lot of words, a lot of words we say different in Johnston.
Well, I say Virginia's got the most unique language around.
Yeah, and then when we.
Things short, like going stove, going there, words clean up, you know?
And then when all, uh, three of us guys, we go, when we go to church, they say, here come a free musketin'.
That's right. We sit closest to earth than anybody, I believe.
Yes, sir, we get right up on the front row.
And William, he sings real long with us, uh, might, he might not even know the song and how he does that, I don't know.
Does he carry a tune?
I just fa- I just follow you along there sometime, Hardaway.
He's doing pretty good if he can follow.
But when you, you get to cussing there, I don't wanna do that.
For the church, oh, yeah, I've done that.
Yeah, I know it.
We just all kinda look, we just all kinda look the other way, don't we?
I'm always poking him, you know, really.
Yeah, yeah, the preacher, he be preaching that and you say, oh, what the hell are you talking about?
Gene gets real serious in church, he, he takes all that stuff seriously and I'm kinda, I ain't on a serious side, so.
Yeah, well.
And Gene, Gene, Gene.
How, and I, you remember that church when it was, when it was wooden framed and it burnt, and it burned one time?
Yes, sir.
Saint Matthews.
That's right.
Well, a lot of people think it burnt to the ground, but it didn't, it just burnt the sanctuary and that a little bit. And his daddy, William's daddy and his oldest, uh, brother, they, uh.
Awesome.
They gave him an estimate of what it was charged to fix it back like the world, I, like four hundred dollars, but they decided to have the whole church there built anew. Do you remember that?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
So Wa- William, you've lived here all your life.
Yeah, I was born and raised right over in the old, old home place and. Yep, nineteen thirty.
And Frankie, how, when did you move in?
I've been here since, I've been here over nineteen forty one.
You moved in in forty one. And I moved here in eighty seven, moved out in ninety one and came back in ninety eight. And this, anybody know the date today? It's, it's the thirteenth today.
The thirteenth, the thirteenth of March, thousand four.
And when people ask me where Gene Miller live, I say, he live in a two story house, it's the only one. Right, yeah, up on the hill.
Up on the hill, yeah.
And I, 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 over there in my little cracker box there, Gene come pulling up here in that little red ra- uh Volkswagen and, uh.
That was back in eighty seven.
Eighty seven, in eighty seven?
Yeah.
Putting them, driving their starve in the ground, putting their mailbox shovel in the bank, see that thing over there now?
First time I met William, I needed to put a mailbox up and I came and borrowed your sled hammer.
Sled hammer, yep, that's right.
Then I went, then I remember driving over, driving over to Frankie's and, and Linda and Bubba, uh, was, was out there with Frankie. And Bubba had a thirty eight stuck down in, in a pistol stuck down in the front, I said, Lord, where are we moving to here?
We're in the south now.
Yeah, I, oh, yeah, I don't forget that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
At my ex son-in-law.
Why, why were you working then, Gene, when you?
Uh, for Richmond Power Equipment, yeah.
So you was working here in?
Here in Richmond, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you used to come out sometime like at lunchtime, you'd ride?
I come out here at lunchtime.
Yeah.
And, uh, because, uh, uh, the family was living in Ohio, I, I would stay in during the week here at work. And then commute back home on the weekends and now, you know, well, Timmy just painted that Volkswagen rabbit that I used, that you were talking about. Painted that Toro red now, Nathan's got, uh, in his possession.
Still around.
Still around, prettier than ever too, you know? After that paint job.
They kept selling that all.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right, much of a jump from that to Audi.
And then we had.
We've got an Audi, oh, yeah, the two boy, yeah.
And both of them got one on top.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, uh, Na- Nathan, he's doing videoing here now. And I, my first video, w- was people had done seen it like Gene and all them, they could tell it was my first one. Cause it would make them, make them a little dizzy.
Yeah, William gives you a panoramic view.
Cause I, I was getting li- I was getting the pictures of all them lights blinking out there, like, on the, uh, rescue trucks and. And here come Frankie down the road and his first thing he gonna do is start cussing.
Make the road was the problem, too, the speed.
Then old Kilby, he come across the field there and that old, uh, what, what model truck was that he had?
That old red Ford.
Yeah.
They're all pieces.
He come across there and he got at the old thing and come walking on there, I got him on the video.
I remember we used to.
And that, that was my first video.
Go and visit, uh, uh, Ethel and Kilby.
Yeah.
And, uh, didn't see the boys around then, you know, but, uh, it was always, uh, talking to them folks, I remember, uh, Danny Linda played the fiddle for her, I know how she must have liked that.
Fiddle, yeah, love, she loved that fiddle, yeah, yeah.
Now Frankie and I walk in the morning, Saturday mornings, we, Frankie beats on the mailbox with his stick, get him to come to the door. Roosevelt and John, they want him to come to the door and wave at us over there. Milton, they don't see much of Milton.
No, but, but Milton ain't riding there.
We, 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 we're missing, we're missing one of our buddies here today.
Yeah, Derwood Thur- Derwood Thurston.
He there in the can. That's where I got seven vehicles, if it wasn't for that, I'd just have one probably.
Yeah. Yeah, he takes care of the fleet here at the Johnson Town, our vehicle fleet.
Get them up.
But, but the guy that, that do all of this work here, put all of this stuff, take all this stuff and put all this stuff together, he's back there behind this, uh, tape. We gotta get him out in the front here.
Gotta make sure everything's running alright.
He's, he's the main guy.
He might get Bill Luger to write the book on it.
You better believe it, he sure will, the way he, the way he's doing him, yes, sir.
And got us talking, how did that happen?
Huh?
You know, it's all talking.
Well, I collected you.
This could go off hours, didn't it?
Had to get, gotta get William away from the job of witnesses.
Yeah, that's right.
Had to get, had to get you away from a soap opera.
No, the soap opera, no, listen to this, yeah.
Alright.
And looking at records, trying to sort them out.
Yeah, radio's not the same here during the week, uh, uh, WXTI, our AM country station, went to ESPN and.
Yeah, that's right.
And, uh, so we only got Saturdays and Sundays to listen to really good old time.
Good ones, yeah.
Yeah.
They ain't just kinda moving on around, oh, uh.
We're trying to keep it old though, aren't we?
See, William's daddy was a five string banjo player, my daddy was a fiddle, and everybody, all my daddy's people could play music, I can't play nothing. I took out my.
You, you got, you can carry a tune though.
Yeah, but we, we, we got the music here in Johnston Town, we got the, uh, old Miller here, he, he can play the music, he can plug on that banjo.
That's right, but you hardly ever hear.
Easy to play, believe me.
Keep us, keep us alive.
You hardly ever hear him playing no more.
Yeah, well.
Well, it'll be.
I need to get inspired.
And now they got, uh, got my daddy's fiddle, the last one he played. A director, a woman, and she go, got fixed it up so long and go.
Yeah.
Yeah, he put two hundred and fifty dollars in that thing.
And I said, the horse fell off there, he had it over for a year after, and he said he put new strings on it, a new bow, he got a new bow. So that fiddle ain't never had all that on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, you know, supposed to learn how to play a tune or like falling cabinets down or something?
I don't know.
If he ever do, I'd like to get a recording of that.
Yeah, I'd like to get a recording of that too.
Yeah.
Well, you talk about you two daddy, what they did, my daddy, my daddy milked cows for a living in Ohio. And, uh, uh, he had the, he had the patience and mom had the stick. But, uh, uh, mom's still with us and she's gonna be out here on the Fourth of July along with my sister.
Yeah.
And, um. I hope to have a lot of fun, gonna have a, hope to have fireworks too, we've had fireworks for the last three years and, um. Uh, this year.
What is this, this?
This be the fourth year.
This be the fourth?
Yeah.
Don't seem like.
We did it legally last year, but we're gonna kinda do it legally this year, but we haven't got the permit yet, so.
But if, even if you don't get the permit, you'll have some fireworks.
Yeah, we think we might just put it all together in twenty minutes, it'd take that long for the law to get here, by that time it'd be over.
Always a way around this stuff.
Yeah. So I made that, wait, you being the treasurer and all, if you gotta bail me out, they come and cuff me and confiscate all the fireworks, you gotta come bail me out, yeah.
Well, I don't know if that matters.
Well, just go in your mattress and get some, get some cash.
Get some cash on the.
You'd be ready to go.
Yeah.
That's right.
But he is gonna have a live band this year.
What's the name of that band?
The Company Store Band, uh, uh, off Farrington Road up here, just north of here, definitely country.
And I ring, they planning on building a little.
They was on the radio that this morning.
Yeah, yeah, they're on XGI, at least two songs every, every Saturday they play.
It is a unique music thing, huh?
Old, yeah, it's old time, it really does sound good.
They gonna build.
Well, Nathan's got a banjo, when's the last time you picked yours up?
I don't remember.
Yeah, he's got a Fender banjo.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we, we have three banjos over here.
That one time we had three banjos.
Yeah, one, one evening.
Yeah, yeah, your daddy and mine and Nathan.
Yeah. Yeah, one, we, we.
Who was playing?
Huh?
Who was playing, I don't know.
We were.
Oh, that's free.
We were playing.
That's free, that's free, I'm playing.
Yeah, you got a picture on it, the horse, that you set in those.
Well, I done, I done learned a few, a few more cards on it, yeah, yeah, I don't know, I'll show you sometime on Gene's.
Well, you can strum a banjo, put more ease in your picket.
I can do that boom, 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 yeah.
He, you know, Frankie's gotta, he's gotta stay in shape, cause he's been going out lately dancing too.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, he, some kinda, gone down a secret, I don't know, maybe we shouldn't tape this.
I ain't doing that.
Should, maybe should we turn the tape off now, or can we talk about, can we talk about you, you going out? It'll be a whole lot said.
His dance.
We're glad you enjoyed yourself, yeah.
Yeah.
Senior dances, uh, that's appropriate for me.
Yeah, Frankie stays fit, he, he.
I can still cut a leg off.
He can still cut a leg.
Yeah, sure you can.
Yeah.
That's not what you're doing, Nathan, that, that's really wonderful, what you're doing with all of this, uh, videoing and pictures. Putting all this stuff together, man, and your wife, she's on the radio there now, and y'all, y'all really go, going somewhere.
Good team.
Did you say you heard her the other night?
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Y'all really, that's, that's, that's neat showing up.
But it was a follow on that too, and he said that was a recording.
Yeah, cause she there by herself, ain't nobody else there.
I thought it was somebody else that too. She come in there and said.
Does she like country generally?
She likes country music, she likes a lot of different types of music, you do, she really likes country music.
Well, I like to listen.
She could tell you the na- she could tell you the name of the song that's playing, just if you're sitting in the car, she'd tell you the name of the song that's playing.
And how long it's gonna play, yeah.
And how long it is, by the second, how long the song will play.
But, uh, my way.
Tell, tell me the song, ordinary song, wh- wh- what did, what did it one last?
Three minutes.
Three?
Yeah, about three, three, two, three, four minutes.
Yeah, I was thinking about four minutes.
If I had mine, uh, I'd give her, I'd rather listen to that country music station than the one we got around here, like, uh, K ninety five. I'd, I'd rather listen to that because it's a little bit more mixed up of, uh, different music.
It was a Bonnie station, with the numbers.
Ninety, ninety three.
Ninety three, what, ninety three?
K L F F S.
WFLS.
W L.
Frederick Doug, up country.
And I've been getting Farmville, some, some too. And that is mixed up.
Yeah, we was talking about yesterday.
Yesterday.
I remember what, I remember the first one I, it, 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 where this, how people talk was Arthur, he'd say, hoes.
Hoes.
Toes.
Well, that's, that's Virginia talk now, you don't hear that.
That in Johnston Town talk?
Well, well, we in Virginia, well, but, but I mean, that's the way people talk in Virginia, if they really come from Virginia and been all the life, so.
Yeah, old Arthur, he, he was in that, I mean, London, in that sand, man, it was hot, tired.
He put the pool in.
Put the pool in there.
The sweat was dripping off Arthur, those.
Now.
What does he drink when he, when he cooking fish, what did he drink?
Ice tea.
No, he had beer with ice cubes.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Big cups with, plastic beer with ice cubes.
Beer, uh.
And the sweat be running off of him.
Oh, he'd have that beer, that mug, a beer, uh, and icing, you know?
Yeah.
Band right around his head to catch the sweat.
Yeah.
He worked, but see, he didn't know when to quit, more or less like the Williams brothers, he knows when things ain't, he knows when to stop, when to start.
Yeah.
Well, Arthur didn't, he works out there, he never gardener there, the hot sun, just working, sweating.
Yeah, he work in that garden, I got, which is over his last garden, and I cleaned that garden up the last, af- after he died.
I used to call Arthur Oscar.
Oscar.
Oscar, did he have a nickname?
Osman?
Osman.
Osman, really?
I did, there's that one.
Osman.
I remember we used to say that you, you and him would sit on the back porch in the evenings.
Yeah, and I said everything.
Count here?
Candy mapling going on over, like going, we said to go into Washington.
One of them had Bosie got his name, Bosie.
Bosie?
Mm-hmm. His name was Harvey.
Oh, yeah.
I, that's all I really, I didn't know his name was Harvey for a long time.
I had it repeated a couple times, I didn't quite figure it out with, with, what you were saying, Bosie.
B O Z I E, I guess.
I don't know why he had that.
And, uh, Bob definitely had a nickname, didn't he? His name actually Robert, right?
Yeah.
Robert Downe.
Rob- Robert Il.
One of the nice things about living around here is if you have a plumbing problem. Cause Wi- William's, all three of his boys are plumbers, so you got a plumbing problem, you get the job done down here.
But you can't have a g- huh? You can't have a g-.
When I got a plumbing problem, I had three plumbers, three boys plumbers, and I go into, I have a leak and I go in there and find the leak and I'll tape it up with duct tape, put a clamp on it.
This is the father of a plumber.
Yes, sir, you, you, you had to hold it until it, till I can get the plumbers there.
Yeah.
Well.
Rusty, Rusty Tommy and Daryl.
Yeah.
And the old home place, two story house, uh, that was a two story house and, uh, that had weather bowls on it and when the snow, it's, you know, snow come on in the house, uh. They used to sleep upstairs, although it's showing horses. And they said that a cottoner, it, he's the last one, last thing I get done to your house when you're a cottoner. You, you, you do other people's houses, but you don't fix up your own.
Hmm.
But they did finally put that rubberized stuff, looked like sunblock brick or something, round the house, covered it up. And it were a whole lot longer than that.
I remember when I had the gas station, I, I never liked working on my own car. I didn't mind working on other people's, but it come to mine, I just.
That's exactly what Nita used to give me to devil for, Wi- William, you can do this for somebody else, but you can't build this for me. Oh, Lord. No, that is true, eh, with everybody, that's true. Shoemaker, uh, she, his, his wife go with no souls on his shoes, you know.
And that's what he done for a business, a lot of it.
But that's where he.
Yeah, that won't have, you put.
We back at the old times, it's a whole lot different than it is now, this world now, I tell you, it's something else. What it was back then.
Yeah, William would, let's see that house still setting over there, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Like watch it all burn that down and.
Oh, man.
That's the old homestead.
Yeah, that'll uh, house be on that television, and that'd be something else. Something to see.
What was the road like out front here, back when you were?
It was dirt.
Oh, yeah, it, it was dirt and, and I seen ruts in there. Two, eighteen inches deep, just one track. And it.
Say this little hill right here, terrible one, right here, get hurt in the field, my cars, I'm pretty hurt in the field, go.
Yeah, well, my daddy. They used to go to town with, with horse and wagon.
They'd pick the car up, put it in the go around.
There were little run rocks in town.
And, and it would take them two days. They have to spend the night in town, down there on side of road. Another horse and wagon have to come along and pull them through the mud. So they tell me.
Yeah, my uncle's daddy and some of his brothers used to say them ruts is probably still down the road, cause they used to work all them road with horse team, but they never, uh. And.
Well, didn't it, didn't it tear the batteries out of the old?
Yeah.
A models and T models, tear the batteries right out of the bottom of the floorboard?
Yeah, that's right.
But what used to be in this, in this field here?
It was empty, it was farm.
But was it crop field?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
What, what did they grow in here?
Well, Earl Charles was the last one that uh, found it. Oh, they'd have corn over the whole field, sometimes be solids and all that.
Less preseason hay, that's a pretty less preseason hay.
You remember, would they work with a team of horses or what?
No, they don't, tractor, just style dirt before.
Well, well, it, one lived in the old ranch, they, they was working with uh, with a horses and mule, engine.
Well, I've cut this whole field, oh, here was a horse moor, fourteen tractor, iron wheel, run them back. With, with a regular horse moor behind it, cut the whole field.
That story, William, you had about, talking about horse and mules, that story you had about your daddy buying a mule from.
Oh, that's true, it was something.
Yeah, go ahead, say it.
Yeah, yeah, my daddy, well, we, right here, well, if you had one horse or one mule, you had something right here then, really. And uh, so this old guy up here, Cleveland Thomas, everybody knew him right here in the county. He had old mule up there, he was selling my daddy. Me and Arthur, we walked up there and uh, to get the mule, so we brought the old mule on home, rode him on, on his back. All down here. Old mule, he'd pull a drag on right there, alright, you know. Hook him to the plow, the culvert, if to get in the garden, he wouldn't do nothing. He wouldn't go. And so, keep on, you hook him to a slide, he'd pull the slide alright, but he just wouldn't pull a culvert or a plow. So, I was saying, well damn, cut that mule back up out to Cleveland. So we carried him back up there. And he carried him on up there and we told him what Papa says, bring the mule back, and he wouldn't do nothing. He said, well, uh, you tell Harvey that uh, I, 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 that was alright, him bringing the mule back. It uh, and I think much, just as much of him as I ever did, but another didn't think much of him in here.
I, I know Cleveland, yeah, that's like.
He, he would tell you something.
Cleveland Thomas?
Cleveland Thomas.
That must been after I took that mule back, that you and I had to pull the plow behind the wood or something, your daddy was holding it, full of garbage.
Yeah, that's right, I, I, I'd pull the plow with a rope around my waist and five o'clock pushes laying potatoes by.
Is that right?
Yeah, right, right in that field there behind, where, in, in my yard down there.
What did you have, what did you, over here Frankie, you have?
I had a horse, start with, I, I had a horse for three years, I pulled that up.
Yeah, that's, that's.
You did tobacco really, didn't you?
That.
You raised tobacco?
Oh, yeah, three years. In forty-eight, forty-nine, that's when it killed me.
Then he, then when you was in service, your daddy, he, he was working this land over my, for my daddy.
They had a few years. Land corn in there.
Yeah.
And Ed Charles, it, it had a dry spell in here and Ed Charles give him a five dollar for a whole salad or that. And uh, after John Howard was living, he said, well, I'd give him twenty-five dollar load for the salad. And your daddy was ashamed even, he supposed to get a fourth or whatever he got, he was ashamed to get him, he didn't know where it was. Corn didn't get for, for three, four feet high.
Old Kilby, get over here in this field and you get in the other end and start cutting that hay, and you could look out for rain, it's gonna rain for sure. And he start cutting his hay. He could get it up with a pitch, just a pitchfork.
He wouldn't cut the whole field, he just cut, cut part of it.
Yeah, cut so much at a time.
Did they, did you get, did you get your sticker uh, for Motel Six coming in down here?
Not yet.
You, you know, when, when that fellow was walking up and down putting stuff on the mailbox, I called William, told him, he says, you have the coupons for the new Motel Six going up here at the county line. You didn't get your discount coupon?
Well, ain't that unusual for him to walk and put.
It is unusual, yeah, I thought.
He has to roll down.
Yeah, like get, they can't put it in the mailbox right around post.
Yeah.
It was just a, eh, the telephone.
Twenty-two dollars for one, one addition, they never did say what it was, and twenty-four dollars, it's got two different things on it. I ain't wearing no telephone. New way we're with the R V.
But I'll bet you anything, oh, one of these days, it will be something up here on this hill.
Oh, I, I'm, probably be a whole lot of stuff right here, if, if, if we still around, I mean, if.
Yes, sir.
We'll be under the hill.
Yeah.
Well, I'm getting kinda hungry myself. I'm, I gotta go home and fix my macaroni and cheese here.
Well.
Don't you got plenty for the rest of the?
Well.
Well, I guess all of us could eat a little something. All of us going up there and get a little macaroni and cheese.
You got enough?
Well, if I, if I, if y'all eat, I won't, I'll just eat today.
We can add some water, add some water.
Yeah, add some water. Huh?
Macaroni and cheese and some of that stuff you gave me.
I got, I got, I got a fresh container of bacon bits, we can pass that around. Stick our tongue in the bacon bits.
Well, what do you think?
It's up to y'all, I don't think I can hardly know, but. I've, I've been used to just cooking for myself, and I don't really.
I don't know, I'll do something.
You're right, Frank.
Well.
Absolutely right.
And I run on a schedule.
I ring this, I ring this the same old uh.
That's, that's old Tom, man.
I ring this the same old thing for the, for old William Johnson, probably ain't but one of him, but I know it ain't but one of old Doctor Hardaway here.
That's right.
But I don't know what we do without it.
Do you have any good Frankie stories?
Huh?
You have any good Frankie stories?
Frankie stories?
Yeah, they probably have, I ain't gonna say right this time.
No, you gotta stay around, listen to this. What's your stomach growling? You didn't see him in church some, well, no, mine was growling last night, Sunday before, mine was growling, then his started growling.
You know, uh, it's funny, oh, you sitting by somebody in, in the wild, a lot, a lot of people's stomach. Things are quiet like that, look like acid time dial, you know?
Yeah, you're not really hungry.
No, no, that's right.
Things moving through the system.
Just cause it's, everything is so quiet, I, you know.
Well, you, you gotta, you gotta punch into work at two thirty, don't you? You got, you gotta punch into work at two thirty today?
Well, that's what it is at work. Well, it's a trip.
It's a trip anyway.
A trip, uh, across the road.
Up country. Across the river.
Southern River.
Savannah River, yeah.
Well, uh.
Friendship trip.
That's right.
Main Street, she says she might come by tomorrow.
Main Street Hazel, really?
No, no, uh, I think she uh, was coming to Brer tomorrow, see, uh, Doris's child in, in something singing. And uh, I don't know, she might come by, she don't know.
And she used to live down, right in that house with the red roof on it.
No.
Or past that.
Well, that new road.
The next, next road up there.
Yeah.
She was the young gal of the neighborhood, so to speak.
Well, when I first moved up there, that whole family was living in the house all the time. And they moved to Richmond that summer.
Yeah.
Not the whole family, but Hazel and Bill and uh, probably just Hazel and Bill was there, I guess. All the, all the rest of them, them got married already.
Oh, here?
Yeah. And Arthur Johnson, William's brother, said that when he moved to Richmond, he thought the world would come to the end.
Yeah.
Well.
There was about six, seven girls, two boys, five girls in there.
Bunch of them.
All them was tall, Hazel, I thought she was sharp as she is, but she was real sharp.
Bill, Bill, he was sharp.
Oh, yeah, and his uh, brother was.
Real tall.
Big, big tall.
Yeah, the years been good to Hazel.
Yeah, unless she didn't want to get married.
Oh, yeah.
Boy, both of you, right, that's like, oh, yeah. But, so if you don't get married, you, you, you have a tendency to stay in a better shape?
Yeah, I would think so. Yeah, she, she's wearing a seventies, ain't I mean, she went for seventy-five or seventy-six, ain't she?
Hmm.
I think she.
Yeah, yeah, she's a couple years older than I am, yeah.
And you'd think she was in her fifties.
Yeah, it's always have, they, they always fixed up. Yeah, always fixed up.
Well, gets up to the, up to the director here now.
We had two Hazel Charleses up in the community up there. One of them, William O'Beirle.
So, so this, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna end this video, we, because, because, talking a minute and food. That, that's a, that, that's a pretty good combination.
Well, well, the, the man that's doing all this, he gotta get in the front here and start talking a little bit, saying what he doing.
I'll save something for myself, don't worry.
Yeah, we, we, whoever's behind the camera, front of the camera.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
I always, when I'm videoing, I, I always say, well, I'm DJ William Johnson behind the camera, I'm always. Yeah, oh, Lord.
Well, we didn't run out of things to say, but we could go off for a while.
Oh, we could go.
We need a nourishment too, I guess.
But that, that is something.
Story of that old horse I had, one that killed me a couple times, uh.
Ride a bareback, something, and it came around in front of me, didn't it?
Right down there, right by that road used to go through by William, between that house to the other house. Right there, that's when it happened. I was riding the horse, and he got the running. And I fell off the, I couldn't step on it no longer, no saddle on it. And fell down in the front, it was holding to his neck, and I couldn't hold on no longer. And when I fell, right in front of the horse, he stopped and licked it.
Uh, well, William, William met, you met Nita riding horse.
Yeah, yeah, I met Nita riding the horse, bareback, and then on uh.
Way down there.
Two fifty, then at by, uh, Muscle Place, Horse Pen. Right, right, right there, the old big old tree is still there in.
Oh, yeah, that was Dick's Boom, yeah, Dick's Boom, yeah.
That's right. Travelers Inn was a little joint where we used to hang out at.
And he started hanging out with them very young, too.
Yeah, I, too young, really, it wasn't supposed to be that, but, really, that's right.
He was going with his brother and all that, I believe.
Yeah, they.
And they used to race forty fours on two fifty, that was one with one lane going, one coming. And race on it, and if anybody met them, if they were trying to pass a car, they'd get out the road. I mean, they wouldn't, they wouldn't slow down for somebody that they, that's the way it was, I think, it wasn't much traffic.
Yeah, that's. Wasn't that much traffic. Well, you can see how much traffic, the picture I got with the go-kart field, uh, track out here. That road over there lined up, everybody in Rockville was over there.
And they parked on side of the road, they.
But Lord, dude, think now would go through here, right there.
Now we try to park it full in fourth of July.
That rocker going in over there, that thing going in, I thought.
Yeah, but uh, this fold, I think, we have some yellow rubens over here, this fold, you know that, Hardaway?
Oh, yeah?